Good morning. Good morning and welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Good morning. There are a lot of people here that need to be heard today. A lot of people have come to this chamber because they need to be heard. Let's listen to the folks who came, who need to be heard today. Let's listen to the folks who spent the time to come here today, who need to be heard, who deserve to be heard. Who have the right to have their voices heard today. That's why we're here today. We're going to hear from members of the public. We want to hear from you. Let's respect the folks who have come here today to be heard. To members of the public, this entire council is meeting today to work through these issues and let's respect people who showed up to give their voice to us. Good morning, everyone. Everyone, please. Could I please ask for the opportunity for this meeting to begin so that we can speak and that you can speak to the issue that has brought you all here? Please let us call the roll. I would like to speak. There is no order. Not for these two guys. That is unacceptable. This is an illegal meeting. They can't be here. They can't be here. No role with these two guys. They can't get on the line here. No role with these two guys. They gotta go. They gotta go. They can't take the road. No road. No road. There is no road. They gotta go. There is no road. This is an illegal meeting. This is an illegal meeting. Those two gotta go. Those two gotta go. Get up now. Get up now. Get up now. And leave now. Dellyon, you gotta go. Sadiel, you gotta go. This is an illegal meeting. Not for these two guys. No road. No road. No road for a council meeting. No road for a council meeting. This is an illegal meeting. They have to resign. They have to resign. You can't fucking say that to a baby. You can't talk to a baby like that. And now, there's not gonna be any official meeting. Only Mike can speak because we don't, unless all three resign. Those three have to resign. We cannot have the city council meeting unless they resign. Let's allow the people who came here to give their voice to this issue the moment to speak. That is what we are here for today. People came here to say a few words and let's give them the respect that they deserve in order to express themselves. We will hear every single public comment today. Everyone who filled out a card will be heard today. They gotta resign. They gotta resign. No meeting until three resign. No meeting until three resign. We don't give a fuck that New England here. We want her resignation. All three have to resign. All three have to resign. All three have to resign. We are going to have a meeting today. It will happen. Now, it can happen with everyone in the room. It can happen with everyone in the room or we can have a meeting without any of you in the room. We're going to have a meeting. We are going to have a meeting today. We're going to have a meeting today. We want to hear from everyone who has filled out a speaker card today and we will. We don't want to put you out. This is your house and we want to hear from you, but we have to do this and let everyone have a chance to speak. We would like to hear from Councilmember Bonin. We would like to hear from Councilmember Bonin. Will you all make that possible for us? We would like to make... And after Mr. Bonin speaks, I implore all of you, let us proceed with this meeting so that everyone here can be heard. Everyone took time off so they could be heard today. So after Mr. Bonin speaks, we will proceed. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Thank you. I really, really do not want to be here today. I want to be home with my family right now. But I want to say a few words. I am still trying to wrap my head around everything that was said and everything that is happening. My husband and I are both raw and angry and heartbroken and sick for our family and for Los Angeles. And as an Angelino, like most Angelinos, I am reeling from the revelations of what these people said. Trusted servants who voiced hate and bile. Public officials are supposed to call us to our highest selves and these people stabbed us and shot us and cut the spirit of Los Angeles. It gave a beat down to the heart and the soul of this city. But before anything else in the world, I'm a dad. I am a dad who loves his son in ways that words cannot capture. And I take a lot of hits and hell, I know I practically invite a bunch of them. But my son, man, that makes my soul bleed and it makes my temper burn and I know I'm not alone because Los Angeles has spoken and it feels the same way. When the LA Times called me on Saturday, I was out of town and I was away from my family. And the reporter summarized some of what was on the tapes. And my first instinct as a father was to implore them, "Don't run the story or at least be vague." Please say, made racist remarks about my son, but I didn't want to see the specifics in print. I didn't want him to have to hear them or read them someday. And I also knew that the tapes contained much more, learned even more in the past couple of days, much more than the comments about my son. As the white father of a black child, you stumble and you fuck up and you try to do your best to be a parent and an ally. And I get it wrong a lot, I get it right sometimes. I knew that I did not want this story about virulent anti-black racism to be centered on an angry white dad. And you know, I was afraid this was gonna be in California section. It's been in international news. These words, they cut and they stung. You know, I know that I can never really know or comprehend or feel the weight of the daily relentless racism, anti-black racism that my son is gonna face. But man, I know the fire that you feel when someone tries to destroy black boy joy. Man, it's a rage. And you know, my husband and I were both raised at a time when, as gay men, we didn't think that we would be married or that we would be allowed to have kids or that we'd be allowed to have a family because our relationships and our families were considered illegitimate. And a lot of what on these tapes stung. But over the past two days, I've heard about a lot more than me and my family. I've heard about attacks on the Oaxacanio community. I've heard the homophobic tropes. I've heard anti-Semitic remarks. I've heard incredible coordinated efforts to disenfranchise blacks and renters and to weaken the voice of progressives and to undermine anyone who tries to do coalition building. It's overwhelming and I am outraged and I'm sickened by it. There are a lot of people who are now asking for forgiveness. And asking for forgiveness is a good first step, but, well, it's a second step because first, you must resign and then ask for forgiveness. But let me be clear, people should not ask me for forgiveness because I can't forgive them because it's not my prerogative. It's the prerogative of a boy who is too young to really understand what the hell is going on. And when he's older, maybe when he's in high school, you can seek his forgiveness. In the meantime, people that love him are gonna try to help him understand when a schoolmate mentions something or when a well-meaning stranger approaches us on the street to say how horrified they are by what happened. Or, and it kills us to know this is gonna happen a lot sooner than we'd like, when he does a Google search and he reads the actual words that were said. And it's not my place to forgive the slurs and the treatment of the Oaxacanio community or the API community or the Jewish community. It's not my place to forgive the coded comments against the gay community or forgive the overwhelming, casual, joyful, anti-black raciness of the entire conversation. And it's not my place to forgive that coordinated effort to disenfranchise all these communities and all these people. Don't get me wrong, I want to be able to forgive the offenses against me and my family and I want to lead with love and generosity and model the world we need to create. And I promise you, I'll try. But to do so, first today, I need to focus on love. I need to focus my mind and my heart and my family's attention on all those who have shown kindness and love to my wounded and hurting family. I especially want to thank Marquise and Isaac Bryan and Karen Bass and Melina Abdullah and all of the parents of black and brown babies who have reached out with a focus not on me but on my son. And I want to thank all of the other LGBTQT parents who reached out. Those people know how to put families first. I want to thank Mayor Garcetti and Nithya and Aunice and Ugo for their friendship and for their love and for their moral support. It has meant more than I can say, but from so many others, literally thousands of people from around the world. And I want to thank everybody who has reacted with fury and indignation. On these tapes, I have heard the worst of what Los Angeles is. From you, I am hearing and I'm seeing what the best of Los Angeles is. This city is strong and this city has a very big heart. And Los Angeles is gonna heal. We can be, we can be, we can be, with a lot of work, a city where our reality matches our aspirations. We need to be a city that doesn't just issue a statement of indignation over something like this, but does the work to make sure that no little black boy, no young Latina, no kid anywhere hears this and that no community feels disenfranchised and disempowered. I'm almost done. That work, that work is never done and it is always, always renewing. It's daily. There was moments with the Tom Bradley Coalition where that was real. There were moments in the multiracial coalition that elected Antonio Villarreal where that promise was there. In Karen and in Marquise and in Nithya and in Aunice and in Isaac and in Ugo, I see... and in Ugo, I see the incredible promise of that coming in Los Angeles. A, a, a powerful, heart-led, multiracial crop of young progressives who are determined to build coalitions. The power is there and the heart is there and the fortitude is there. And I, I have more than hope in, 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 in the pain and all of this. I have more than hope. I have, I have faith that that can happen. Thank you.
Thank you for expressing your sorrow. We share it with you, Mike, and you, you can tell in this chamber, you're surrounded by people who are here for you, who are here for Sean, who are here for Jacob. We must carry on so people can be heard. Today is Tuesday, October the 11th. We'll pause for as long as we need to. We'll pause for as long as we need to. Colleagues, yesterday, we celebrated our fifth. All right, seeing as we're not gonna be able to proceed with what we're seeing right now, I will have to call a recess. We'll, we'll start this meeting again once we're able to regain order in the chambers. So we're on recess and we'll start this meeting until we regain order in the chambers. Start with that, but for that to happen, we need order in the chambers. We need order in the chambers in order to hear from people who are here and have taken time to provide public comment. In order to do that, we need order in the chambers.
So, we would like to begin with public comment. If members of the public would like to speak, we can start with that. So, if members of the public would like to address the council, we can start with public comment, but we need to clear the podium to do that.
In order to do public comment, we'll need to clear the hall and make the podium available for public comment in order to accomplish that. We have plenty of people who are here to provide public comment, but we have to have order in the council chambers in order to accomplish that.
If the public would like to address the council individually, we can start with public comment. So, but we need to clear the podium if we're gonna take public comment. So, we, we'd like to, we'd like, so we'd like to start taking public comment. If you'd like to address the council, we need to clear the podium so that members of the public can speak, which I think is what you're here to do. So let's let the people speak, we need to clear the podium to do that. Okay, so we're trying, we're try- Mr. Surchenko, please stop shouting. So, we need to clear the podium. No, we've got a quorum so we can start the meeting.
We have a quorum, but there, there is an order of public comment, so you'll be called. Uh, your name will be called and you can step to the podium and make public comment, but in order to do that, we need to call the meeting to order by taking a roll, by taking the roll. We're gonna, we're going to, we're gonna do that so that we can begin the public comment. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld.
Blumenfeld present, let's start the meeting.
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Cedillo, De Leon, Harris Dawson, Hutt, Corretts, Krikorian, Lee, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Ramon Rodriguez, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. And Mr. City Attorney, if you could please read the rules for public comment?
Um, I can summarize them. So for members of the public, we're gonna take public comment. You can speak on any of the agenda items, they're open for public comment, um, which are items nineteen to twenty-six and thirty-four. You have a minute for general public comment too, if you wish. I have a feeling that most of you probably wanna talk in general public comment, so you'll just let me know what you wanna speak on and you'll get a minute if, per item, if you wanna talk on the items, up to three minutes, and a, a minute for general, if you wanna talk about the things that have been spoken about earlier in the meeting. Okay? So, let's, uh, we can call the first speaker.
And with that, we are ready. Let's, uh, call upon Candido. Candido, you called several items on the agenda and one item for general, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Candido.
So, so can we let Mr. Candido in? It's his turn to speak.
Candido, it's yours.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, you did call upon me. Uh, my name is Candido Marison, I've been here since nineteen eighty-nine and I've seen corruption here for all those years. And for many years, I, you, folks know that I've been fighting Ms. Martinez and I condemn her for her words because she has laid a nuclear bomb here that we will not allow to divide us. We must come together as people of this great city and we must join hands and we must forgive also. Please, those of you in this community, you have to forgive, you know you have to forgive. We could be in the same, as, as situation with Martinez, but please, just try to forgive. But this has been happening since nineteen, for many, many years and I hold this council responsible and, uh, I thank you for giving us the time.
Thank you, Candido. Thank you. And now, if all speakers today, you, you can speak on general public comment and we'll hear every last one of you, so feel free to just focus in on what you're feeling today. Uh, next, we, uh, have Herman on the queue.
Hello, hello, hello. How's everybody feeling today? Do we want justice? Queremos justicia? Okay, a esto viene, the comments of now former city council president Nuri Martinez and council member Kevin De Leon and with the complicity of Gil Cedillo and the federat- and the former federation president Ron Herrera, who were in the room laughing at these comments are racist, disgusting and undermine the solidarity work that we've all been building here in Los Angeles. These four individuals have possibly damaged the decades of intentional and difficult work of building multiracial understanding and solidarity among black and Latinx communities. Martinez and her colleagues prove that they care more about consolidating their own political power than being of service to our great city. The offensive, anti-black, anti-indigenous, anti-child, anti-queer, anti-teenage comments are revolting.
Thank you, thank you. Our, our next, next, we have Herman, followed by Red Chief, followed by Mike Greenspan. Thank you. We're gonna get through every speaker today. Herman is next with, followed by Red Chief and Mike Greenspan. Herman, Herman, you have the microphone.
Okay, Mr. Herman, it's your turn. You had your ne- next card in.
So the mass returns to Los Angeles to speak on item nineteen, twenty, twenty-three and twenty-four and finally twenty-six. My grand entrance, I want to thank you all for having us here as el grito de Hispanic culture. Now, Mr. Fable, can we read into the record my items, please?
Mr. Herman, which items did you sign up for? You've already used thirty seconds up.
Uh, I'm, I'm regarding all items, three minutes and my non-general public comments, sir.
You've used one meeting, we'll set the clock for thirty, three minutes for the other items. Please stick to the items, Mr. Herman.
I will try my fucking best.
But people that wanna speak, so please.
Right, I will try my fucking best. Public hearings have not been heard, item nineteen. Kevin De Leon's a piece of shit, fuck item nineteen. Item number twenty, relative to offer of a reward for information leading to the identification, apprehension, conviction, snitches get stitches. Shut your ass up and let me finish, fool. Let me finish, goddammit, I got three motherfucking minutes, motherfucker, why the get interrupted?
Yeah, that's, that's, you're done. Herman, you're done. Yeah, okay, so.
So, Mr. Herman, you, you weren't on the items, you've used up your minute, so we're gonna move on to the next speaker. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Red Chief. Our next speaker is Red Chief.
Call the council president.
We have to go in the order of people who came here to fill out speaker cards so we can hear from folks. Um, Red Chief is next.
Thank you, I just wanna say fuck, fuck you Mitch and I'll pass it to Isaac.
Red Chief, you have the microphone.
Mr. Hunt, it's your turn, so please.
Yes, thank you, I'm the Red Chief Hunt. Most of this shit is bullshit. Number one, Mike Bonin's been calling us monkeys for years. All of this don't make no sense. You know what? All of you guys need to take, take a look at yourself and figure it out, cuz you guys are all fucked up, see? And you guys all cause trouble, man, and, and this is what, one big problem, man, a whole bunch of bullshit on national TV in LA. About what? Nothing, cuz everybody has, they've, they've done some name-calling. Everybody has done name-calling in their life. I don't agree with it. Uh, yeah, I don't agree with it, but you, you, the one that's pointing the finger has done the most name-calling. Put us off Venice Beach, all the black people. He put us all off Venice Beach for some real estate. Fuck you, Mike Bonin.
All right, our next speaker, we're going to, we're going to give Isaac Bryan, state assembly member, the privilege of speaking now. Uh, so Isaac Bryan, assembly member, will step to the microphone and then we're gonna, we're gonna go in the order of the names that people on the list. So, so ma'am, after we're, we're gonna hear from Assembly Member. Ma'am, you will have a chance to speak, everyone's going to. Assembly Member Bryan will now have the floor.
I, I see the clock ticking, am I supposed to go?
Yes, please, we'll reset it for a minute, please go ahead.
Thank you. The reason this is a hard meeting to conduct is because we heard an hour of some of the most hateful things this city has ever heard from three, four people in some of the most powerful positions in Los Angeles. People are hurting and I'm gonna, I am a black adopted child, Mike, so I feel for your son and in this moment, I'm so glad he gets to see you fighting and I'm here to fight with him and I'm also glad that you didn't make this story about you or him. Brown political power can't be rooted in black erasure, in anti-indigenous speech, in homophobic speech. We deserve better. The people have called for these resignations. Elected officials have called for these resignations. We need these resignations before we can move forward, but trust me, there will be a healing because everybody in this room and everybody in this city wants that healing, but we can't have it without accountability and I'm hopeful today, we get that accountability. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna hear next from Jasmine Garcia. Jasmine Garcia? Jasmine Garcia?
Jasmine here, please come up. And, and while Jasmine's coming up, Ms. Garcia, I would just note, Mr. President, that there have been requests to continue items one through ten until the eighteenth of October and items fourteen through sixteen to the twenty-eighth of October.
Good afternoon, my name's Jasmine Garcia and I'm outraged, right? Like everybody sitting here, but I'm gonna take some time to pass on the mic to my compañera, another member of ACE, so that she can take my time and speak. But we call on the resignation of Kevin De Leon and Gil Cedillo and Nuri Martinez, but we need that resignation now.
Okay, so, so we can't see time, but I assume Ms. Garcia signed up yourself, right? Right? So what, we need to go in the order in which the cards come in.
Okay, Jasmine, Jasmine, did she sign up as well? Is she on the list? Signed up? And, and su nombre, por favor, su nombre?
Okay, mi nombre es suyapa Maldonado. Que Nuri Martinez renuncie, Kevin De Leon renuncie, Gil Cedillo, yo tengo un niño de color que es mi nieto. Yo tengo un niño de color que es mi nieto. Estoy dolida y necesito que esa persona nazista...
Un momento, traducción. Un momento, traducción, por favor.
My name is Goyapa Maldonado, and I'm here because I'm asking for the resignation of Nuri Martinez, Kevin De Leon, and Gil Sadio. I have a colored grandchild, and I'm here outraged and in a lot of pain.
Yo vengo de descendencia indígena y estamos siendo pisoteados por personas que nosotros elegimos. Que renuncian los cuatro, porque los cuatro tienen responsabilidades. Necesitamos. Fueron elegidos por el pueblo, y el pueblo está en disposición que se vayan. Necesitamos la renuncia urgente.
Okay, momento, un momento.
I come from an Indigenous background, and we're tired of getting stepped on. These are the people that we chose, and we're asking for the resignation of all four of them, because they need to go.
No tiene que haber ninguna discriminación para la gente de color. Todos somos iguales. Necesitamos respeto, educación, porque nosotros, ustedes los salarios, se les paga con los impuestos del pueblo.
Gracias.
The people chose you guys, and we need respect, we need education, and we need to know, we need you guys to know that we're the ones that pay for your salaries, and we need respect.
Thank you. Gracias. Mr. Streffin?
Yes, so, so two things, Mr. President. Am I correct that Items 1 through 10 and 14 through 16 were continued without objection?
Without objection.
Okay, and so let's take the next card for the speaker. We have to go in order, we can't have just people ceding time to each other.
So, the next speaker is Jelani Hendricks. Jelani Hendricks, you're the next speaker.
Is Ms. Hendricks there? Okay, so let's let Jelani, Jelani's supposed to speak. It's her turn.
We have everyone who signed up, and we have the order, so everyone who signed up will have a chance to speak. Thank you for your patience. Jelani Hendricks.
My name is Shadell Hawari, and I'm representing the Black Los Angeles Young Democrats today. As you can see on our shirts, it says that we are with the Blacks. Nuri Martinez denigrated George Gascon by saying that he's with the Blacks, and that is not okay. We know that it is important to stand in solidarity. If George Gascon, the district attorney of this city, wants to be in solidarity with Black people, we are not going to talk about him in a negative manner. If anyone in this room wants to stand in solidarity with Black people, we are not going to say fuck them, they're with the Blacks. We care about solidarity. We care about our Oaxacan brothers and sisters, and what they said about them is not okay. And what is happening, we are not only going to be asking for resignations, we are not only going to be asking for investigations. We need to ensure that the gerrymandering that was happening behind closed doors is looked at with an investigation, so that we, as Black people, as people of color, as Latinx folks, can ensure that we...
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, thank you. Did Jelani Hendricks, is Jelani Hendricks in the House? All right, the next speaker will be Jo Helen Schumate. Jo Helen Schumate.
Ms. Schumate here? Hi. Great, come to the mic. All right, please begin.
Good morning. I'm really disappointed, more so in race, race Gil Sadio. I remember when he was an eligibility worker with Los Angeles County DPS where I worked, and we all loved him, and he... I remember when he went over to 660 and got busy with that union. That's how he got his political comeuppings, working with 660. So, I hate he left. I wish he would have been here to hear my comment, because I'm disappointed, and he needs to resign, and also, Nuri Martinez needs to resign immediately. But before she resigns, she need to give Mark Really Thomas back his, his benefits, because she has resigned, and she is getting, she has not resigned, she's on a leave of absence, receiving her benefits, but she should have to give him his benefits.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, we have Juan Carlos. Our next speaker is Juan Carlos.
Is Mr. Juan Carlos here?
Juan Carlos.
Great, okay, so.
Good morning, everyone. Yeah, I'm Reverend Juan Carlos Ruti, I belong to United Methodist Church.
Sorry, can you move the mic a little closer up to your house, so we can hear you?
Yes, yes, I'm Reverend Juan Carlos Ruti, and I'm Cuban, I'm Afro-Cuban, because I'm Black, but today, I just want to say two words. Los Angeles is very sad, and the people that we charge, they be failed, so we can accept this. The only thing those people have to do, they say, "I'm sorry, and I got to go." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carlos.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lori Cardenas. Lori Cardenas, the floor is yours.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lori Cardenas. I am president of National Action Network Los Angeles. Brother Bonin, I too am a adopted child. I stand with you in that. Our children, your child, nobody's child in this chamber is a monkey. Nobody. That language unacceptable. The anti-Blackness unacceptable. The anti-immigrant language unacceptable. We are here today to say resign today, not tomorrow, not when their term is over, but on today. That was unacceptable, what we heard. Unacceptable. Council, put pressure on your colleagues to resign today.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maraki? Maraki? Or Maraki?
Okay, come on up.
Coming up, come on up.
First of all, fuck you. Fuck De Leon. Fuck Nuri, and fuck Sadio. Fuck this whole meeting right here, because it's illegitimate. The people are shutting this shit down afterwards. This whole thing is racist. The fact that they had the audacity to sit here in front of the people that they mocked, that they minimized, that they demonized, that they marginalized, is unacceptable. The fact that you are trying to continue with business as usual is unacceptable. 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 We are the people, and we are the voices who matter in this room right now, not yours. I yield the rest of my time, but fuck this.
Next, we have Pastor Thimbaleka Coleman Smart. Pastor Thimbaleka Coleman Smart, who would be followed by Damian Goodman, and then after that, Pastor Q. Jane Marie.
Peace and blessings, everyone. Scientific research has told us that the oldest bones found were that of a Black woman. This information is for Nuri, Ron, Gil, and Kevin, and anybody else talking in that Jim Crow antebellum South back room. You will not shame Blackness. You will not shame our royal children. We like in the woman king will come for you. We are coming for you today. Are we coming for? I said, are we coming for? We could not have them sitting amidst this family meeting, because they have soiled their seats. Their seats are poisonous. The seat of Nuri is poisonous, and I would like, in the spirit of karma, that her check be grabbed, just like you grabbed MRT's check.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Damian Goodman, who will be followed by Pastor Q. Jean Marie, followed by the letter A.
I had two minutes. I had two minutes. I was going to speak on an agenda item that is on, ready for public comment as well. Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Damian Goodman.
Continue.
You're good, please.
Sorry, we're having a little clock issue. Please begin.
There are two items, Mr.?
Oh, which item, I'm sorry, which items?
Destination Crenshaw.
Okay, please, so start with that one, and then go to general. And we'll restart your clock, please.
Only one item!
Clock.
Okay, now begin.
Thank you. My name is Damian Goodman. I'm a CD-10 resident, a Crenshaw Subway Coalition, Downtown Crenshaw Rising, and a member of the Blacks. Destination Crenshaw is a project that intends to honor the contributions of Black people to the city of Los Angeles, a city that seats on unceded Tonga land. My great-great-grandfather and great-great-granduncle came to Los Angeles fleeing from the segregated South in 1904. Here, they established the first Black bank west of the Mississippi. They built the first FHA housing for Black people in the country. Like many Black Angelenos who will hopefully be recognized through Destination Crenshaw, their contributions are remarkable, as individuals, as businessmen, as civic leaders, because they overcame a tremendous amount of racism then carried in the Jim Crow South. Over 118 years later, much has changed, but so much remains the same. The repugnant, racist, anti-Black, anti-gay comments made by this city's leaders and condoned are not merely a reflection of their individual bigotry, they are a reflection of a city government that is rotten and anti-Black at its core.
Thank you, Damian. Thank you. One more minute, yes?
Yeah, please continue.
Mike, my thoughts are with you, your family, that beautiful Black child. That attack was an attack on that Black child and all Black children. The tapes have simply brought to the surface an anti-Black racism that permeates within this city government. It is reflected in your policies. It is reflected in your budget. It is reflected in your hiring. It is no wonder why we are home to the largest unhoused population in America, which is disproportionately Black and over-criminalized. It is no wonder why we have a Black displacement crisis and attempt at Black erasure. This entire city government is in need of an exorcism. It begins with the immediate resignation of Sadio, De Leon, and Martinez. Resign now or be recalled. But it is just the start. There is a need for some truth and reconciliation, reconciliation. There is some need for some reparatory...
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Thank you. Next, we have Pastor Q. Jean Marie, followed by Achille, followed by Pastor Eddie Anderson.
Okay. Pastor Q. Jean Marie, the Church Without War, Skid Row also include clergy and lady, United for Economic Justice. I'm standing with my brother Walter Contreras. One of my Brown colleagues yesterday said that Latinos cannot become the new face of racism. That's heavy. Neither can Black folks, because you know, we know, once we get into the system, oftentimes we adapt to the system. I'd like to say, though, there's only one order of business for us today. That is, everyone will speak. I understand you guys already introduced the motion to get them to resign. They need to resign today. We're not, we're not letting any other business take place today, except for the people to share what's on their heart, and then there's no more meeting. That's it. They need to resign.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Achille, followed by Pastor Eddie Anderson, who will be followed by Pastor Kelvin Salz.
My name is Achille, and I'm here on behalf of Black Lives Matters and the Fannie Lou Hamer Institute. And last night, well into the, into the evening, 60 Black leaders met. One, to express our outrage. Two, to express the immediate demand for the resignation of Kevin De Leon, Gil, uh, Nuri Martinez, and Sadio. Immediately. No questions asked, just go. Your political careers are over, you need to leave, and there's nothing you can do. That was the first point that we made. The second point was, we are calling for a complete and comprehensive investigation into the redistricting process. And calling for a complete overhaul into the House of Labor that allows, that allows for, that allows for anti-racist and, 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 and anti-Black discussions to be supported and held in the House of Labor. And so, those 60 Black leaders, while they are, some of them are here today, but the first thing that we call for is the immediate, the immediate resignation, without question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Achille. We have Pastor Eddie Anderson, followed by Pastor Kevin Salz, who will be followed by Maria Alvaranga.
Good morning. My name is Reverend Eddie Anderson. I serve the McCarty Moore Christian Church, but more importantly...
Pastor Anderson, one moment, please. Pastor Anderson, let's save your time, so you can be heard.
So, let's let, there's somebody at the podium who's, it's his turn to speak, so I want to hear from him, so can we set the clock back in a minute, so you can speak? Please, I'm sorry, please begin.
My name is Reverend Eddie Anderson. I'm senior pastor of the McCarty Moore Christian Church. We've been a part of the Blacks for 90 years in this, this community. I'm also the redistricting commissioner for CD-10, and I have some questions, because while on that commission, we were called all kind of N-words and all kind of things, but I did not expect that from City Council. I did not expect that from the City Council President, Gil Sadio, or Kevin De Leon. There was mystery maps that appeared in the last parts of our redistricting commission, and we wondered, where did these maps come from? After hearing those tapes, I think I know where those maps come from. I'm requesting that the city attorney do an investigation on where did those maps come from? How they tried to gerrymander, especially the district I represented, CD-10, all throughout the process. We need accountability, and they need to resign, and for a message from the Blacks. Cornel West says, "You can't serve the people unless you love the people. You can't love the people unless you know the people. They don't know us, they can't serve us, and they definitely don't love us, so they must resign today."
Thank you. Thank you, Pastor. Next, we have Pastor Kevin Salz, followed by Maria Alvaranga, who will be followed by Dominga Solorsano.
Good morning. I'm Pastor Kelvin Salz, and I am a faith-ruthful community organizer, also here with Clergy for Black Lives, and I'm joined by my brother here, Pastor Guillermo Torres. Certainly, a dark cloud sits over Los Angeles once again, and it sits over Los Angeles because of the blatant, bold, destructive, and demeaning comments by City Council members and the labor leader. So, we are here to say we are heard, we are in pain, we are disappointed by the divisive and destructive words uttered by a system that seems to be infected with and affected by progressive plantation politics. So, what we are asking for is resignation first. Apology is fine, though disjurious and pretentious, but we want to move from apology to accountability, resignation. Secondly, investigation, because we know it's not...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you.
Next, we have Maria Alvaranga, followed by Dominga Solorsano, who will be followed by Orma Mendez.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Maria Alvaranga. I'm coming from District 8. I'm coming because I feel frustrated and unrespected for our council. They are coming to represent us in what happened when they are falling down. That community is going to, to suffer a lot. My Indigenous, they are coming to work in the, in the fields, they are bringing the food to our tables, and nobody said nothing about this. African-Americans is very important, our children. I'm a teacher. I love my children. My, my, mis niños, those are wonderful, trees are on my hands. My people in the houses, they are living with the stress to be in the streets, more people on the street with their kids, with their animals, is not possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Dominga Solorsano, who will be followed by Orma Mendez, who will be followed by Maria Briunas.
Necesito traducción, por favor. Buenos dias. Este es, yo soy este, me llamo Dominga Solorsano, y soy del distrito nueve, y soy miembro de ACE. Estoy muy preocupada por estas personas que tienen estudio, verdad? Y yo también, yo no tengo estudio, pero les tengo respeto tanto como mayores, menores, y estudiados y no estudiados.
One moment. One moment.
My name is Dominga Solorsano, and I'm here with District 9, and I'm here with ACE, and I'm here because I'm worried about the people that have high education. I don't have education, but I still have respect.
Y por ese mismo respeto les pido, por favor, que extiendan las ayudas de inquilinos y no ensuciándonos, porque también somos seres humanos, igual que Kevin De Leon and Nuri Martinez y Sadio, por favor.
And I'm here to please ask you to not remove the emergency protections for tenants, and we are just also human beings, just like Kevin De Leon, Nuri Martinez... And we are just also human beings, just like Kevin De Leon, Nora Martinez, and Gil Sadio.
Y ellos tienen que arrepentirse porque ellos vienen de una mujer, y no sé si de México, de Guatemala, no sé de dónde son, pero también valemos lo mismo que ellos porque por eso pagamos impuestos aunque tan humildes que seamos.
Thank you.
And they're going to have to repent because they come from women. I'm not sure if they're from Mexico or Guatemala or wherever they're from, but we have to give them respect because we also pay our taxes here.
Thank you. And this must be Orma Mendez, who will be followed by Maria Brionas, who will be followed by Victoria Enriquez.
My name is Orma Mendez. I am with ACE 9, and I'm here speaking about the COVID protection last year, that it never did work. What they said they will do, they didn't do it. They just said a word and they don't stand up on their word. We need people who will do the right thing to stand up and do what they say. You know, there are two prejudices. We are all black people together, but we are a human being. So we asking that they will do the right thing and let these three candidates get off from there. We don't need them anymore. We don't need them because we got to get the one that will do the right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Maria Brionas. Maria will be followed by Victoria Enriquez, followed by, one word already. And yes, one moment, one moment, Ms. Brionas. Yes, Mr. President.
As the next speaker comes up, there's been a request to continue Item 21 to next Tuesday, October 18th. Is that the order, Mr. President, without objection?
That shall be the order without objection. And Ms. Brionas, please, you have the floor.
Good morning. My name is Maria Brionas. I'm a member of ACE on the 8th District. And I'm a pale. I'm very embarrassed to see my representatives do act the way they did. I'm a Hispanic like them, and I'm really hurt. And I want you to think, and actually to revoke the votes for last week, for the protection of our tenants. I am a tenant, and they decided not to vote for us. So we need those protections. We still need the protections, and we want them to resign now, not tomorrow, not next week, not next year. Now. We want them to leave their seats now. Thank you.
Thank you. Victoria Enriquez, Victoria Enriquez, followed by, the name already, and followed by Alonso Landeros.
Victoria Enriquez, yo soy miembro de ACE, y vivo en el distrito nuevo. Buenos dias, mi nombre es Victoria Enriquez. Vivo en el, soy miembro de ACE, y vivo en el distrito nueve.
Y traducción, por favor.
Good morning. My name is Victoria Enriquez. I live in District Number 8, and I'm a member of ACE.
Yo siento muy feo porque todos somos humanos, y la gente está muy ofendida por el señor Sadio, por Kevin De Leon, and Nora Martinez. Yo no sé, se rebajaron mucho. Al hablar eso, pensaron que nunca iban a darse cuenta de los mismos compañeros de ustedes de la mesa directiva que se ponen a hablar los compañeros. Y también les digo que les quiten sus salarios porque gracias a Dios tienen su trabajo aquí por toda la comunidad.
I'm feeling really, this is bad because we're all human beings, and I feel offended by Kevin De Leon, Nora Martinez, and Gil Sadio. I feel like they're talking between them as coworkers, and they thought that nobody was going to hear them, but I'm here to ask that you guys remove their salaries.
¿Qué le sirvió su estudio que tuvieron para rebajarse a eso que hablaron? Eso no quedaba para ellos. Gracias.
Thank you.
What good was their education for them to sink that low and to keep talking like that?
Next, we have Allred, followed by Alonso Landeros, followed by Eloisa Lopez.
Si, los Latinos y la traducción, por favor.
Si.
Los Latinos y la gente de color que estemos unidos en estos momentos, y esto que está pasando no es permitido, que es algo que injusticia, que todos tenemos que estar fuertes en estos momentos, y estas personas tienen que ya firmar ahorita para estar afuera.
Okay, un momento, por favor.
I want to say that the Latinos and the people of color were here together in this moment, and this should not be permitted, and we have to stay strong in these moments, and these people have to sign their way out of here.
También, lo que está pasando en nuestros hogares, que los dueños tratan de tomar ventaja, y sobre todo, sacar a los inquilinos para afuera, que todos pagamos renta y vivimos en un techo que es una bendición. Muchas gracias, feliz día.
Thank you.
And then, also, that the landlords are trying to remove us from our house. We also pay rent, and we have a roof over our heads, and we're really grateful for that, and everybody have a nice day and blessings to all.
Thank you. Sir, could you please give me your name?
Morris Griffin, better known as Big Money Griff.
Okay, so, but I have Alonso Landeros, followed by Eloisa Lopez, though.
So, we'll get to you, but we're taking the order in which-
We will absolutely get to you, sir. We will get to you. We're just taking these in order. Alonso Landeros, followed by Eloisa Lopez, followed by Elba Cuevas.
Muy buenas tardes a todas las personas aquí que están presentes. Les pido que paren bien la oreja con lo que les voy a decir.
Good afternoon to everybody here present today. I would like you guys all to lift up your ears to what I'm going to say right now.
Hoy vengo representando a la comunidad indígena oaxaqueña mexicana. Qué lástima que no están Nora Martinez ahí para que me digan carcajeándome mi cara que somos mexicanos feos.
I'm here on behalf of the Oaxacan Indigenous Community here in Los Angeles, and I would like to have Nora Martinez tell me to my face with that cackling of hers that we are the ugly Mexicans.
Quiero que se vayan del poder. El poder que ellos tienen para estar discriminando a la comunidad mexicana y afroamericana.
I need them to leave because they're the ones that have the power to discriminate against African and Mexican communities.
Yo he sido parte de ACE reclamando nuestras escuelas de Los Ángeles, y soy padre contra la privatización. He visto de cara a cara a los ricos que están metiéndose, pagando campañas políticas de muchos de ustedes.
I'm part of ACE, and I'm part of the parents of schools anti-privatization, and I want, I've seen parents face to face paying for campaigns for you guys to get reelected.
Como políticos piden nuestro voto, ahorita Nora Martinez está apoyando a María Brenes pagado por Bill Brumfries y Red Casting. Es una vergüenza que-
Gracias. Gracias.
Right now, Nora Martinez is getting her campaign money from Maria Brionas.
Thank you. Thank you. So-
Thank you.
Thank you. We hear you.
Gracias.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Eloisa Lopez, followed by Elba Cuevas. Eloisa Lopez, followed by Elba Cuevas.
She had a translator, so half of her time went to the translation.
Do we have Eloisa Lopez here, please?
Eloisa Lopez, followed by Elba Cuevas.
Just so that you guys know.
Followed by Soyapa Maldonado.
So, it's Eloisa Lopez's.
Are any of those three names here, Eloisa Lopez, Elba Cuevas, or Soyapa Maldonado in the house?
Hi, if it's your turn, sir.
Soyapa?
Hi, my name is Elba Cuevas, but I'm gonna let somebody else-
I'm sorry, what's your name again?
Elba Cuevas Varela.
Well, I have Eloisa Lopez, Elba Cuevas, Soyapa Maldonado, or Michelle Hope Walker. Michelle-
Soyapa Maldonado.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, wait a minute, don't start my time.
Michelle Hope Walker.
All right, it's your turn now.
It's yours.
Okay. First of all, Mitch, I do want to say thank you for taking it up. Bless your heart. The next thing I want to say, it's hard enough out here being black, and so for our own government to be against us, our government is where we go to file complaints when somebody's being racist against us. And then the other thing, Mark, y'all got Mark out of here quick. I don't know how y'all got an indictment, but y'all need to find some indictments against these other four, okay? The three that's on, it doesn't make any sense. This is wrong, what is going on. Homelessness, black. Not only that, y'all need to look back for this past year, all the corruption, everything they put their hands to needs to be investigated. Because if they've lied and they've been doing, look how they covered all this stuff. We would have never known without, thank you, Licker, thank you, Licker. We would have never known. We need investigations for the whole year. Matter of fact, for their whole terms. They need to be in jail. Yes, they need to resign. And please, y'all gotta get them off. Put them in a room somewhere. You say you can't take them off? Put them in a room somewhere. We don't want to see them up here. Do something different. You got Mark off, so I know y'all can find-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Big Money Griff, followed by Ellen Evans, followed by Vernine Mincy. Big Money Griff or Ellen Evans?
So, it's Big Money Griff's, it's your turn.
Here we are.
All eyes are on Los Angeles, California, right now. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. And I'm asking that those of you around this horseshoe horn here to think about changing the Los Angeles City Charter to get rid of these three. Today. Sadio, I know you're watching. De Leon, I know you're watching. Shame on you. Shame on you guys for doing, for being complicit. I got a problem with that. I've been involved in this, in our community since the Rodney King beating, Daryl Gates, O.J. Simpson, police brutality. I've been down here many years. I'm 72 years old, and I'm sick and tired of being sick and tired. This is disgraceful. And so I'm asking you to enforce them to resign. That's all of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Ellen Evans, followed by Vernine Mincy. Ellen Evans, followed by Vernine Mincy.
Hi, my name is Ellen Evans, and I'm here on behalf of my Neighborhood Association and Council District 4, and I'm also a lesbian mom. And I just want to say that we too are saddened and angered by the, and denounce the divisive remarks we learned of on Sunday. These sentiments have no place in public discourse and no place in our hearts. And this is especially galling in the face of the multitude of challenges our city faces. I was going to list them all, but I'm sure you know what they are. So, thanks very much, and let's hold everybody accountable.
Thank you. Next, we have Vernine Mincy, followed by Dr. Critical R. Truth Bay. Vernine Mincy.
I'm Vernine Mincy, and I'm appalled by the behavior of the City Council in general. I'm appalled behind those words that were said. We've been in the streets, and in being in the streets, we don't need to be mocked being in the streets of the words that this city should be listening to and uplifting. There's people that are homeless on our streets, that are houseless, that there is no regard. And it's shameful, the fact that we have elected officials that think that it is their right to sit and mock black folks, to mock indigenous folks, to mock people in this city that you have torn apart with your words. I want the immediate resignation of each one of them. Then I want an investigation, and everything that has been done in the 10th District, I want it to be reviewed. Because anything that people, and black people in that part of the city have tried to do, this City Council has stood in the way for it not to take place. So I want an investigation, and I want it immediate. But I want their resignation today. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Critical R. Truth Bay will be followed by Janay Moore, followed by Andrew Grabner.
Agenda 18 and public comment. Agenda 18 and public comment.
Okay, so you have-
One minute for each.
Okay, so, the LAPD hiring process, I know we're talking about something that we already know that happens behind the scenes. My issue is how we treat each other out here. Half of us don't even show up here every week. I am appalled, not by what we already know behind the scenes, because Matthew Tenchavas from Kevin De Leon's office never met with black organizations, homeless organizations, because we are mayatas. Hmm? That's what we heard, yeah? So it's not just about Bannon's black son, it's about black equity for black women born and raised. California's reparations committee, we still discussing it. So what Nora Martinez did was not surprising. It's what everybody does behind closed doors. She just got caught. So please don't sit here, don't tell us nothing, just cut the check. Cut the check. So, account number 3251379514012100.
And you can go on to General, Dr. Truth Bay.
Account number, routing number 12100358, the Kingdom Warriors Foundation. We just want the $150 million that Lassa and their white supremacists and their Nora Martinez mentality to return back that money to black organizations. I need to see some black businesses apply for this funding. Don't sit there and complain when they're not putting the paperwork in. Put your paperwork in, because now you're going to get funded. You're going to get funded. We don't want to hear apologies, sorrys, or I feel so bad. I don't want to see you crying. We don't care. Cut the check. You see how Rihanna says it best? Better have my money? That's what we're saying. When we born and raised here, and my answer is, I'm an FBA. I'm a descendant of slaves, so we have a distinct history. I don't want you saying nothing to us. Just cut the check. Cut the check. Because we can help build housing, we're trying to build housing. We're not trying to hear you discuss how to solve homelessness because you don't have a clue about that. We already know how you feel. We want to do our own job now, just cut the check, and then you can resign and talk about shit later.
Thank you.
Next, we have Janay Moore, followed by Andrew Grabner, followed by Veronica Sans, or Sansay. Janay Moore, followed by Andrew Grabner, followed by Veronica Sansay. Are any of these three individuals in the chambers? Okay.
My name is Veronica Sansay. I am part of Downtown Crenshaw Rising. I am also One Queen's Army. But most importantly, I am black. Okay? Most importantly, I am a resident of District 10. Now, Nora Martinez, and this is not a request, this is a demand. Nora Martinez, Gil Sadio, and Kevin De Leon, they need to go. They need to go now. I'm ready to escort them out of this city hall, out of this city council chambers. They mean us no good. They need to, we, I am demanding that everything in District 10 be investigated because you people act like District, the residents of District 10 don't matter. But I'm here to tell you that we all matter. All black people matter in Los Angeles, California. And how dare the City Council just allow Nora, Nora has been trying to displace District 10?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have, I, thank you. Next, we have Janay Moore. Janay Moore, followed by Andrew Grabner, followed by Ramel. Janay Moore, if you're in the house, or Andrew Grabner, or Ramel. All right? Yeah, if I called your name, please step forward. You're on. And please give us your name.
I'm Andrew Grabner.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
All right. So, I'm here today to say that an apology or anything else is not enough. We need the immediate resignation of Nora Martinez, Gil Sadio, and Kevin De Leon. And their comments are racist, they're unacceptable, and they've also likely messed up the entire redistricting process. And I'm also here to say that, I'm guessing, based on the culture I see in this council and such, that it's not just the three of them. There's probably several other of you on this council that have, that are also saying racist comments, and I call on any of you have to resign now before, and if we don't, if you don't, just say, admit it, resign. If you don't just say, admit it, resign. And if you don't do that, we will find out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ramel. Ramel followed by Tori Bailey. Ramel, Tori Bailey, followed by Denise Francis Woods. Ramel, then Tori, then Denise.
Hello, everybody. I just want to say again that it's very disappointing just coming out of college. And I've told Nuri this for weeks now, that I hope that she continues to listen to us. But obviously, she does not. And I just want to say that Nuri doesn't represent the Latino Hispanic community. And she never will. Because I thought coming into here that she, coming from the same background as I do, single parent, you know, coming from not very much money, that she would cause change. But she's a failure. That's what she is. She's a failure, just like her father who just left there. And that's how I felt. I don't want to make this personal, but it just hurts that she's not helping her community. And she shares the same racist... Like racism that we've all shared. We all have our little interactions. And I'm 24 years old. I've seen my mother be belittled as... Because of her race. And it's tough. And I want to see change for this.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We have Tori Bailey followed by Denise Francis Woods, followed by Bex Kleinfeldter.
Okay. First, there was a violation of the Brown Act. We want that addressed. I had to write this down because it's been emotional. A racist mind is toxic and will soon cause you to rot internally. A tear came to my eye as my spirit could not believe that Gil Sodillo was a part of this hatred. And how dare he say the words of... And tease the Koreans of dark skin when he is as dark as many of us? This is... I mean, why? Why? This is why many of our other cultures and races or people do not have many of the jobs today. I was just at Gil's office in May and June. And a few of his staff need to go as well because they're following the leadership. I'm running out of time, but I have a lot to say about this. And the trash that came from Nuri's mouth was such malintent. So we are calling for all involved, Nuri, Gil, Kevin, Ron officially to resign without pay as of today.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Denise Francis Woods followed by Bex Kleinfeldter, followed by Enrique Velazquez.
Good morning. I think I'm in agreeance with everybody else about the resignations of all three of these council members. But I really want to speak on item number 21, which I realize that it's not being voted on. But if I can just do it in a comment, and then I'll be done with it. Crenshaw Destination Crenshaw, it's an item that's asking for a small amount of money or what have you. But what I want to say to that is simply this. There's been a lot of money spent in Destination Crenshaw. Okay? One thing the 8th District needs more than an art museum is we need our homelessness handled. We need jobs. We need grocery stores. We need banks. These are the things that our councilmen, who's been there for eight years now, has done absolutely nothing about it. We don't even have a damn library in District 8. Okay? So he can get his cootles today about asking for Nuri to resign. We all are in agreeance for that to happen. But there's more work to be done in District 8 that Marquise Harris Dawson has not taken care of. And so this is what I'm here for today, just to say that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you. We have Bex Kleinfeldter followed by Enrique Velazquez, followed by Tenacity.
Council members Martinez, Sodillo, and Deleon must resign immediately. The recordings were not comments that show frustration got the better of you, but display the character you are comfortable with when the cameras aren't rolling. Approximately 9% of LA is black and each one are now less comfortable and less safe knowing that City Council is not only full of bigots and racists, but also threats to democracy. I said what I said. You politicians and elected leaders of Los Angeles represent a great, if not a greater threat to democracy than any Trump supporter with a flagpole. You are the true insurrectionists. Because not only did you spew vile hateful comments, but those comments clearly informed the way you exercise political power this city gave you by electing you to City Council. Shame on you for subverting democracy this way. These comments were made over a year ago and your apologies now prove that you aren't ashamed of your conduct or your behavior. You're ashamed you got caught. LA must be better than this and prove itself the example for the rest of the country to follow. Resign now.
Thank you. Enrique Velazquez followed by Tenacity, followed by Mike Greenspan.
I'm Enrique Velazquez. And I am with the LA Tenant Union. And I am upset. I am angry because of what we found out, how these people have referred to black folks, Latino community, indigenous people, and everybody else that they mentioned in those conversations. They were caught. But this is an indication that that's who they are. This is an indication that conversations like this happen behind the door all the fucking time. We are sick, we're tired. You guys have created policies to gentrify our communities, to pull apart our communities. That is not acceptable. That needs to stop. This is a historic moment. Please do not take it lightly. We're watching. Elections are coming. And all of you guys are vulnerable. This is not in LA. It shouldn't happen in LA. You guys should be creating and thinking about the needs of low-income families not being the pockets of developers. This has to stop. And it has to stop but once. Nuri Martinez, Sodillo, and Deleon need to resign now. Not tomorrow, not next day, but today.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Tenacity followed by Mike Greenspan, followed by Elizabeth Hernandez.
I just want to echo everything that Baba Akili said, my Baba. Y'all need to get investigated. All y'all are compromised, each and every sort of way. Even if you are hurt and have been slandered, your family's been slandered. Everybody is compromised here. Ain't no exception to it. So here's what's going to happen. Everybody else is going to speak. The public is going to have their comment. But anything less than, hey, Nuri, Kevin, and Gil just handed in their resignations, please, and thank you, is just not acceptable. You are past the point of getting the benefit of the doubt. Time and time again, we have been trusting you and you've been breaking our trust. And we cannot keep having this happen. Oh, you want to... I don't need the mic. I don't need the mic. Look, this shit has to stop. Nick, I just talked to Shannon. Why does she have more humanity than you? You just talk to us like, oh, we're going to do this without you. This ain't Echo Park, bro.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Greenspan followed by Elizabeth Hernandez, followed by Sofia Mendoza. Mike Greenspan? Elizabeth Hernandez? Or Sofia Mendoza? Mr. Greenspan, are you here? No? Okay. Are you a...
Elizabeth Hernandez.
Okay. The floor is yours.
My name is Elizabeth Hernandez. I'm an ACE organizer. As a mother, I feel the pain that Mike Bonin was feeling. My child has been also been subjected to racism as a Latino. It's really heartbreaking when it comes from people that we just tenants, regular people in our homes, you know? Things that are educated. And it's not like that. They made fun of us like if we were, you know, nothing. So one of the questions that one of my comrades just asked, so what color is Nuri Martinez's blood? Because she thinks she is up high. She's asking what village or people it's coming from. Or Oaxaca people, maybe, sure, yes. But they're very mighty. Because our Mexican people are always fighting, as well as our black comrades, our Korean people. We all fight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. We have Sofia Mendoza followed by Rosa Martinez, followed by Ellen Ariaga.
Hola, mi nombre es Sofia Mendoza. Necesito traducción.
Okay.
Soy miembro de ACE y vivo en el distrito nueve. Sí, estoy aquí, verdad, pidiendo la renuncia de Nuri Martinez, Kevin Deleon, Gil Sodillo. Porque ellos es indignante lo que han dicho, verdad? Y también queremos que no se olviden ustedes que están aquí, que las protecciones de los inquilinos que le extienden, por favor. Porque...
A momento.
Hello, my name is Sofia Mendoza. And I'm here with ACE from District 9. And I'm here to ask for the resignation of Nuri Martinez, Kevin Deleon, and Gil Sodillo because what they said, right? And I'm also here to remind you guys to please not remove the protections for tenants.
Sí, ya que dieron la extracción hasta el 31 de enero, pero eso no es suficiente. Sí, porque hay muchos inquilinos en la calle y no queremos ser uno más de ellos. Gracias.
Gracias.
Because even though you have extended the protection until January 31st, that is not enough. There are a lot of families on the street and we don't want to be one more.
Thank you. We have Rosa Martinez followed by Ellen Ariaga, followed by the Reverend Walter Contreras. Any of these three individuals in the chamber? Rosa Martinez, Ellen Ariaga, Reverend Walter Contreras? Or Rodolfo Martinez? Okay. Is this the Reverend Walter Contreras? The floor is yours, Reverend.
Muy buenas. Yo soy un gringo caitudo. O sea que no soy gringo gringo. Primero fui indígena. Y ahora soy gringo caitudo. Porque los indios usamos caites, ¿verdad? Ahora, yo participé en el primer ciclo de votación y voté por el señor Kevin Deleon.
Momento.
Good morning. My name is gringo caitero. I'm not a gringo, but I'm a caitero. I used to be an indigenous because indigenous people go around with their caito.
Pero qué decepción la que me ha llevado con el señor Deleon. Yo creo que ellos violaron la ley. Ellos violaron la ley porque están discriminando, ¿verdad? Son racistas. Y ya no deberían de regresar al consejo municipal. Porque este es un consejo honorable, pues.
Gracias.
I voted for the first time for Kevin Deleon and it's been a disappointment. And I'm here to ask for his resignation because this is an honorable council meeting and it should remain that way.
Thank you, Reverend. I called for Rodolfo Martinez, who will be followed by Leilani Hendricks. Rodolfo... Oh, he already... Oh, that was Mr. Martinez. Okay. Do we have Leilani Hendricks? Leilani Hendricks?
Ariaga.
I have Annabella Marcos Sanchez Leilani Hendricks. Any of those three individuals present? Please step forward. And you have the floor.
My name is Leilani Hendricks, president of Black Los Angeles Young Democrats. I'm going to keep this short and sweet. When my wife read what Nuri Martinez said about Mike Bonin's son, she looked me in my face and said, is this the right city to raise our black son? Because I have a three-year-old. And I don't tolerate violence towards black children or any child at that. And you know what I told her? I looked her in her face and I said, we're not going anywhere. I love this city. I've adopted this city. Right? I told her, I'm going to do my part to make this city better. And one last thing I want to say is the blatant anti-black racism that was in those recordings is crazy. We witnessed four Latino leaders, some of the strongest leaders in this city, strategically planned and plotted to erase black political power. And we're the most marginalized community in this city. So I'm going to tell you all this. I challenge all of you in this City Council. Y'all need to address anti-black racism. And if you don't, we will. And you have two choices. Be on the right side of history or be on the wrong side of history.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Annabella followed by Marcos Sanchez, followed by Eduardo Masariegos. Annabella, Marcos Sanchez, Eduardo Masariegos.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Ellen Ariaga. Soy miembro de ACE. Estoy aquí porque soy parte de la comunidad de Los Ángeles. Necesito traductor.
Okay. Traducción, por favor.
Hello, my name is Ellen Ariaga. I'm part of ACE. And I'm here as part of the community here in Los Angeles.
Estoy aquí porque realmente como todo ser humano necesita respeto, merece respeto. Tenemos que tener mucho cuidado al abrir nuestra boca cuando hablamos de otras personas. Y creo que ese es parte del respeto que merecemos como seres humanos. Por muy pequeño o grande que sea la persona, necesitamos ser respetuosos con cualquier persona. Por esa razón estamos aquí para ser voz de nuestro pueblo. Y que ustedes que son las personas que guían nuestra ciudad y son las autoridades deberían de tener primero esa parte, el respeto hacia las demás personas.
We're here because we're all human beings here and we all deserve respect. And we're here because everybody deserves to have the respect. And as a voice of the people here, and you guys should have respect for us as authority of this grand city.
Negros, blancos, y gringos somos iguales. Eso es lo que tenemos que ver ante los ojos de Dios. Y tenemos que tenemos que respetarnos unos a los otros.
Gracias.
Gringos, white people, and black people, Gringos, personas blancas y negras, somos todos hijos de Dios y todos tenemos que respetar a los demás.
Gracias. Su nombre, señor.
Reverendo Walter Contreras.
Oh, okay, lo llamamos antes. Por favor, la mesa es vuestra.
Sí, lo oyeron todos. Estoy aquí solo para decirle un cuento a todos ustedes líderes: considere el hecho de que este es un momento en que pueden parar y hacer lo correcto. Y estoy pidiendo que lideren bien y que Dios les dé gracia y sabiduría. Si hacen lo correcto, el futuro está adelante. Si deciden solo, usted sabe, hacer como usual y no preocuparse por esto que está siendo gritado por el público, entonces pagarán un precio muy, muy fuerte. Asegúrense, asegúrense, escuchen las voces, hagan lo correcto y recuerden: disculpas, confesión y perdón no se pasan por sí mismos. Amen. Amen, es muy importante. Así que siento por mis amigos porque también he trabajado con ellos, pero estoy muy decepcionado. Deben resignarse. Gracias.
Gracias. Gracias, reverendo. Tenemos a Charles Zhu, Nancy Villanueva y Henaro Leal. Tal vez he llamado su nombre, por favor.
Annabella, mi nombre es Annabella, soy miembro de ACE. Necesito intérprete, por favor. Yo estoy aquí como madre y estoy bien decepcionada como mujer especialmente por Nurri Martínez. Como mujeres necesitamos como madres, somos las cabezas de los hogares y necesitamos educar a nuestros hijos de hoy en adelante. No va racismo, por favor líderes, líderes representantes de nuestras comunidades latinas, por favor eduquémonos. No permitamos más racismos. Nuestros niños van creciendo y qué decepción realmente escuchar esos comentarios ahí afuera.
Momento. Traducción.
Hola, mi nombre es Annabella y estoy aquí con ACE y soy madre y estoy decepcionada por Nurri Martínez. Decepcionada como mujer porque como mujer somos la cabeza de la casa y tenemos que educar a nuestros hijos. No más racismo, por favor. Y como líderes de esta ciudad, por favor, no más racismo. Tenemos que enseñar esto a nuestros hijos.
Nuestra comunidad, nuestra comunidad latina necesita mejores representantes y por eso tenemos que tener esa visualización de ahora en adelante, cómo tener, cómo escoger nuestros mejores representantes latinos. Gracias, que Dios los bendiga.
Gracias.
Nuestra comunidad latina necesita mejores representantes, representantes que sean visualizados, que sean mejores que los que tenemos. Gracias.
Okay, he llamado a Charles Zhu, Nancy Villanueva y Henaro Leal.
Mi nombre es Charles Zhu, soy organizador de ACE en Distrito Diez. Y quiero decir esto. Quiero decir que antes de que Nurri Martínez, Kevin De León y Gil Cedillo dijeron lo que dijeron en palabras, ellos y muchos de sus colegas, muchos de los que están todavía en frente de mí ahora mismo, lo dijeron en acciones. Lo dijeron pasando el mayor presupuesto LEP de la historia. Lo dijeron pasando el 41-18. Lo dijeron terminando las protecciones alquileres en esta ciudad cuando todavía estamos en estado de emergencia. Mostraron su contempto. Mostraron su contempto por todos nosotros a través de acciones. Y ustedes también, Mitch, no deberían estar allí porque ustedes personalmente ordenaron a los fascistas LEP stormtroopers a Echo Park Lake en marzo de 2021. Y todavía no hemos olvidado. No solo que esos tres miembros tuvieron que resignar, sino que toda la estructura que representan necesita ser arrancada. ¡Get out now!
Aquí tenemos a Nancy Villanueva, seguido de Henaro Leal, seguido de David Q.
Muy buenas tardes. Yo estoy nombrado también. Mi nombre es Marcos Sánchez. Y necesito traducción. Pertenezco, soy miembro de ACE desde el 2013, estoy con ellos, apoyándolos. Y yo, yo creo de verdad que ustedes tienen un cargo importante. Tienen las decisiones de nosotros como comunidad. Si nosotros no estamos aquí, ustedes hacen lo que hacen. Claro, no me refiero a todos.
Mi nombre es Marcos Sánchez y estoy aquí con ACE. Desde 2013 he estado aquí apoyándolos y creo que ustedes tienen un cargo muy importante aquí.
Ahora, ahora, para ser breve, nada más les quiero decir, cuando nosotros hacemos algo mal, algo malo y que nosotros nos llenamos de vergüenza, si ellos tienen una pocha de vergüenza, Nurri, Kevin y Gil deberían de salir por donde entraron porque ellos no nos representan a nosotros. Ahora caemos en cuenta por qué tanta gente en la calle porque ellos como como consejo de la ciudad no han hecho su trabajo. Dejan que los dueños nos estén hostigando todo el tiempo sin deberles un solo centavo de renta.
Ahora estoy aquí para decir que cuando hacemos algo malo, nos sorprende la vergüenza. Y ahora Nurri, Kevin y Gil tienen que salir a través de la misma puerta que entraron. Ahora sabemos por qué hay tantas personas en la calle porque no han estado haciendo sus trabajos y por qué les dejan que los propietarios nos insulten a los alquileres.
Solo, solo para terminar, como ustedes visten y como yo he visto, no me define quién soy, la verdad. Lo que nos define quiénes somos.
Gracias. 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 Traducción.
Lo que estoy usando y lo que están usando no define quién somos.
All right, Nancy Villanueva, seguido de Henaro Leal, seguido de David Q.
Hola, buenos días. Necesito traducción. Mi nombre es Nancy Villanueva y estoy con la organización ACE. El día de hoy estoy aquí para exigir dos cosas.
Mi nombre es Nancy Villanueva y estoy aquí con ACE y estoy aquí para exigir dos cosas.
Quiero que los racistas y clasistas Nurri Martínez, Kevin De León, Gil Cedillo sean destituidos ahora por sus comentarios estúpidos.
Estoy aquí para pedir que los racistas y racistas Nurri Martínez, Kevin De León y Gil Cedillo seigan ahora debido a sus comentarios estúpidos.
Número dos, queremos una extensión indefinida de la moratoria de desalojo para proteger a los inquilinos negros e indígenas que atacaron en su complot.
También estoy aquí para exigir las extensiones indefinidas de las protecciones para la comunidad negra y indígena que no ayudaron como parte de su complot.
Y esto lo hicieron para quitarle el poder a nuestra gente angelina, a los negros, a los indígenas y a nosotros, los inquilinos.
Y lo hicieron para remover el poder de nosotros angelinos, de los negros y los indígenas y de nosotros, la gente de Los Ángeles.
Los queremos afuera ahora. Gracias.
Los queremos ahora. Gracias.
Henaro Leal, seguido de David Q, seguido de Abby Robles. Henaro Leal, David Q, Abby Robles. Siguiente, tenemos a Sergio Vargas, Gina Viola, Sky Chang. ¿Fue su nombre llamado?
Mi nombre es Abby.
Abby Robles, por favor, adelante.
Necesito traducción. Mi nombre es Abby, yo soy organizadora del Distrito Diez en el área de Los Ángeles. Vengo el día de hoy para decir que lo que hizo este individuo, Nurri, es una persona muy ignorante porque si ella se fija, se corta las venas y me las corto yo, tenemos el mismo, la misma sangre corre por nuestras venas. Es una mujer ignorante que se ha pasado el estudio por las nalgas.
Momento.
Mi nombre es Abby Robles y estoy aquí con Distrito Diez y soy organizador en el área de LA. Y estoy aquí porque lo que Nurri Martínez dijo era ignorante porque si ella corta sus venas y yo corto mis venas, todavía tenemos el mismo sangre corriendo. Y ella es simplemente ignorante y su educación, ella podía arrancarlo en su cintura.
Es indignante porque si se ponen a pensar, todos somos hijos de Dios, todos somos iguales, no importa el color o la raza. Así que hay un Dios que todo ve. Y pido hoy, yo no vengo a negociar porque es obvio que no venimos a negociar que corra esta gente así hoy. Venimos a exigir porque el pueblo es el que está hablando. Ustedes ya, su palabra de ustedes ya no vale.
Gracias.
Estoy aquí con indignación porque somos todos hijos de Dios, independientemente de raza o color. Y estoy aquí para exigir porque es obvio que no estamos aquí para preguntar más, que ustedes sepan deshacer de estas personas porque somos la voz de LA. Gracias.
Gracias. Sergio Vargas. ¿Está Sergio Vargas aquí? No, seguido de Gina Viola, usted es siguiente, seguido de Sky Chang.
Felicidades. Tomó usted 30 segundos para mostrar a todos que no es capaz de dirigir este show. No en absoluto. Queremos a Mike Bonin allí durante el resto de este mandato. Cuando caminamos por la puerta hoy, debería haber tenido tres posters de sus resignaciones arriba para que nosotros lo veamos. ¿Aún los estamos pagando? ¿Están pagando hoy? Eso es despreciable. El 41-18, lo repele hoy. Es claro que eso es anti-negro racismo. Cada uno de ustedes que propone cualquier dirección del 41-18, todos deben resignar también porque su anti-negrosidad está en todo display y está saliendo fuerte y claro. Lo siento por lo que pasó a Mike Bonin, lo siento por lo que pasó a su hijo, por lo que tuvo que vivir y decir, pero vamos a ser claros. Así es como hablan todo el tiempo. Y cualquiera que esté en la habitación con ellos está hablando así también. Así que eso es lo que necesita empezar a prestar atención. ¿Quién más está en la habitación con ellos? No eres mi presidente, Mitch, adelante.
Sky Chang, seguido de Brock Lee. Sky Chang, seguido de Brock Lee, seguido de Arnold Sachs, si el Sr. Sachs está aquí. Sky Chang. Brock Lee. Arnold Sachs. Jason Reedie. Eric Brightwell. Arnold Sachs está aquí. Arnold, por favor, tome la mesa si quiere hablar. Será seguido por Jason Reedie o Eric Brightwell o Billy Green. Esos serán los siguientes tres nombres.
Gracias. Buen día, Arnold Sachs. He firmado varios temas. Continuamente desprecian las leyes de la SEQA. Si vas a ir verde, no vas a ir verde. Estamos en medio de la peor escasez de agua jamás en el estado de California y aún continúas a construir más subidas. ¿Por qué es eso? No puedes hacer ambos.
¿Cuáles temas querías hablar?
Sr. Attorney, estoy hablando en la agenda. ¿Cómo suena?
Bueno, no creo que sí.
Es difícil decepcionarte.
¿Cuáles temas querías...? Sí, creo que todos los temas que querías hablar que podrían involucrar SEQA fueron continuados, que son 14-16. Así que os dejamos un minuto y luego podéis hablar de cualquier cosa en el tema jurisdiccional del municipio. Por favor, continúe. Adelante.
Ya me cortaste tres minutos, imbécil. Gracias mucho, imbécil. Así que gracias. Así que de todos modos, todo lo que necesitas hacer es pasar un poco de tiempo y recoger algunos de estos boletines. Están por todas partes. Puedes recoger el Acto de Servicios de la Comunidad. Dice aquí, Mark Ridley Thomas quiere hacerse a favor del Acto de Salud Asequible. ¿Quién lo aportó? Presidente Obama. ¿Quién fue él? Fue un presidente negro.
¿Puede hablar con el micrófono, Sr. Sachs?
Fue un presidente negro. Mark Ridley Thomas había firmado 15,000 personas y 1,000 dólares por persona. Fui a una reunión, la gente me dijo: "Continúe buscando a Mark Ridley Thomas. Él robó 660 millones de fondos federales y lo usó para construir un estadio en Las Vegas en lugar de ayudar a los homeless. Tenemos homeless, tenemos homelessness. Tenemos un Acto Brown. Tenemos la DOD, Título Cuatro. Metro tiene un título diferente.
Gracias, Sr. Sachs. Gracias, Sr. Greenspan. Gracias. Siguiente, tenemos a Jason Reedie, seguido de Eric Brightwell o Billy Green. Así que creo que... ¿Es Jason Reedie, Eric Brightwell o Billy Green en las salas? Creo que el Sr. Reedie está encima, así que su turno.
Entonces, item 19 en publica.
Claro, así que item 19, te daremos un minuto y luego vamos a la general publica.
All right, también estoy aquí con los negros. Es 10:11, así que... ¡¡¡12!! El estado de Etiopía está actualmente involucrado en un genocidio en la región de Tigray, así que para invitar a este nuevo embajador a estas salas, ilumina la ciudad, los colores de Etiopía, se despedirá de los crímenes de guerra que han cometido. Esa es la razón principal de votar en contra de esto, pero además de eso, todos los miembros de este consejo deberían votar en contra de cualquier motion de KDL hasta que renuncie. No tiene lugar en este consejo. De hecho, KDL, sé que estás viendo, no hay lugar como casa. ¿Visteis nosotros fuera de tu casa ayer? No sabía que el "K" en KDL significaba Kansas, tonta racial. KDL ha sido anti-negro más tiempo que he estado vivo. Su disculpa dice: "Lamento aparecer y condone y incluso contribuir a ciertos comentarios insensibles hechos sobre un colega y su familia en privado. Parece que piensas que estás en problemas por hablar de un colega detrás de su espalda. No, estás en problemas por decir mierda racial. No parecías condone o contribuir a estos comentarios. Debes condone y contribuir a esos comentarios. Pero no te preocupes, pronto tendréis mucho tiempo para trabajar en algunas referencias de películas nuevas, tonta." Pasando a la general publica. Justicia en este bastión de Babylon es poco y muy cerca, pero hemos descendido en estas salas llenas de racismo para exigir la renuncia de KDL, Gil y Nurri. Estoy aquí hoy como padre negro a este niño negro. Nuestros niños negros son robados de su inocencia, de su alegría y de su humanidad a diario. El pensamiento negro recently lanzó un verso donde él rabe: "Niño negro que creció en un hombre negro". Y ves a todos estos hombres negros en la multitud hoy que fueron once niños negros. Como niños negros, nos pintaron como amenazas a la sociedad, unruly y uninteligente. Estamos constantemente deshumanizados por personas como Nurri que nos etiquetan como monjes y personas como KDL que piensan que nuestras vidas valen nada más que una bolsa de mano. La sociedad, incluida este consejo, nos haría pensar que debido a nuestra melanina somos maliciosos, pero somos magníficos y magnéticos, ¿verdad? Nurri pensó que era su responsabilidad proporcionar un golpe contra un niño negro de tres años, pero de alguna manera no es dentro de su responsabilidad renunciar. Y así, en 70 minutos, este trio de pensadores insultó a cada grupo marginalizado en LA y no hay retroaliento de eso, así que a favor de cada niño negro, hombre negro y persona negra, debes renunciar, retirarte y ir a la...
Gracias. Eric Brightwell, Eric Brightwell, seguido de Billy Green, seguido de Guillermo Torres.
Hola, Eric Brightwell, publica. Martínez, De León y Cedillo no necesitan resignar. Necesitan ser removidos inmediatamente y prohibidos de siempre mantener el cargo electo en este estado nunca más. Va más profundo que ellos, en realidad. Este cuerpo debe ser radicalmente reformado. El racismo casual y la homofobia, los indultos de la FBI, el golpe de espaldas, el clasismo y el contempto por los constituidos. Como alguien que ama esta ciudad, estoy tan molesto, decepcionado y avergonzado de nuestro consejo municipal. Lo que todos hemos oído, desafortunadamente, confirma lo que muchos de nosotros han mucho sospechado, que muchos de nuestros servidores públicos preocupan solo por permanecer en el cargo y mantener el poder y no por representar los intereses de aquellos que parecen diferentes de ellos o que carecen de poder y riqueza. Actualmente hay demasiado poder en demasiadas manos. Los Ángeles es el hogar de 4 millones de personas. Es la segunda ciudad más grande del país. Es por muchas dimensiones la ciudad más diversa del mundo. Demasiado grande y demasiado diversa para ser adecuadamente representada por cualquier 15 personas. Ciertamente demasiado grande y diverso para ser representado por aquellos que buscan dividirnos en los negros, los blancos y los latinos y luego nos enfrentar a los demás.
Gracias. Gracias. Tenemos a Billy Green, seguido de Guillermo Torres, seguido de Donna Jones.
Buen día, mi nombre es Billy Green. Soy ex presidente de Beverly Hills Hollywood NAACP. A Nurri Martínez, Gil Cedillo, Kevin De León, no acepto su disculpa. Dijeron lo que querían y querían decir lo que querían. No se necesita disculpa. Los tres de ustedes no pertenecen a la dirección en esta ciudad. Como ciudadano de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, creo que deberían renunciar inmediatamente a su posición como miembros del consejo antes de hacer más daño a esta ciudad. Necesitamos líderes que puedan unir a esta ciudad. No nos divida. La redistrictación para ustedes fue todo acerca de poder y dividir y conquistar. Más poder para ustedes y la comunidad. Eso es lo que estaban buscando, más poder y dividir esta ciudad. Gracias.
Gracias. Guillermo Torres, seguido de Donna Jones, seguido de Hassan Zuniga.
Hola, mi nombre es Guillermo Torres y soy director interfaith de la Programa de la Clergy and Native United for Economic Justice. Lo que se ha expuesto ahora es algo que ha estado sucediendo durante muchos, muchos años. La desconexión de la dignidad de otras comunidades por la opresión de otra comunidad. De personas en poder que tienen esa responsabilidad. Para él, mucho es dado, mucho es requerido. Se sentían no solo nosotros, opresaron no solo la comunidad negra, pero opresaron a todos nosotros como raza humana. Muchas veces vinimos antes del consejo municipal para decirles que esto estaba sucediendo y estoy contento de que fue una llamada de despertar para algunos de nuestros socios de trabajo también. Todas estas ferrocarriles, ¿cuántos trabajadores negros ves en una ferrocarril? ¿Huh? Esto ha estado sucediendo durante años. Sheriffes, gangos chicanos, opresando comunidades negras. En los sheriffes, ¿durante cuánto han estado opresando comunidades negras y blancas? ¿Verdad? Así que...
Gracias.
El último...
Gracias.
...que aquellos que fueron antes en bandera en Egipto han...
Gracias, señor. Gracias. Gracias. Siguiente, tenemos a Donna Jones, seguido de Hassan Zuniga, seguido de Christian Green.
Buenas tardes ahora. Gracias por permitirme hablar. Solo quiero agradecer a Gil Cedillo, Nurri Martínez y Kevin De León por mostrarnos tu cara real y asegurarse de que nunca serás nada más en esta ciudad. Gracias.
Gracias, señor. Hassan Zuniga, seguido de Christian Green.
Eso es yo. Hassan, soy organizador de ACE en el estado de LA. Trabajo con latinos, mexicanos, indígenas y personas negras. Marquise knows, tenemos muchos reuniones sobre eso y traduzco la mayoría de estas reuniones. Y trabajo con esta comunidad. La noche pasada, les hablé y se sentían que esto era algo que ya sabían en la comunidad. Están conscientes de que nuestros políticos tienen esas reuniones ocultas. Es avergonzador ver eso. Es avergonzador también. El año pasado tuvimos que hacer publica para saber que estábamos luchando entre nosotros por distritos en Distrito Nueve y Distrito Ocho. Se avergonzaban de la situación, querían investigación sobre eso y también en Distrito Diez porque escuchamos que estaban planeando conseguir que alguien fuera de su lado, que sabemos que son políticos, eso es lo que van a hacer, pero es avergonzador que se encontraron atrapados. También, como escuchamos a otros colegas en ACE, queremos asegurarnos de que las extensiones de COVID-19 se extienden aún más porque sabíamos que sus planes eran terminar lo antes posible y que estaban con los propietarios. Quiero decir, ¿qué más puedo decir? Deben resignar. Kevin De León, Nurri Martínez y todos los demás. Gracias.
Gracias. Christian Green, seguido de Shion Smith, seguido de Saed El Hawari. Christian Green o Shion Smith o Saed El Hawari. Audrey G. ¿Está Audrey G. en la sala? Gracias. All right, la mesa es vuestra.
Así que hasta que todos los resignamientos se entierren y se acepten, este es un cuerpo ilegítimo. Podríamos... estamos desperdiciando nuestro tiempo. No solo ilegítimo, sino anti-negro, un instrumento de la LAPD, anti-pobre y anti-homeless. Y solo quiero terminar diciendo que la peor parte de ese triste, secreto, puerta trasera, Acto Brown y reunión violando derechos civiles fue que probablemente... Act and civil rights violating meeting was that it was probably absolutely run-of-the-mill.
Audrey G. Oh, that was you, I'm sorry. Uh, we have Ramel, followed by Nikolai Iteneer. Ramal, followed by Nikolai Iteneer. Reverend Shane Harris. Reverend Radim Robinson. Dr. Jill Humphries. Oh, sir, your, your name, please.
Reverend Shane Harris.
Oh, yes, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, councilman, uh, you know, I just wanna thank Councilmember Bonin, uh, as a, uh, former adopted African-American child in foster care system. Just wanna thank you for taking that child in. Um, I think it's imperative, uh, that all three of these council members resign as a national civil rights organization, the People's Association of Justice Advocates, that's the national civil rights group that I lead. I'm here to stand with the local activists and the local leaders in calling on all three of those council members to resign immediately, effective today, because they cannot handle the city's business. Secondly, I'm asking, uh, the state attorney general to investigate. I've already issued a letter to the state attorney general asking for an investigation of civil rights violations in that meeting. And I support the efforts, uh, of an independent redistricting commission. We did it in San Diego, it showed impact and I think it's imperative, uh, that that happens here. So, thank these local leaders and we call on this council to request the state attorney general to investigate, uh, provide a civil rights investigation of these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend. Uh, Dr. Jill Humphries and Cliff Smith, followed by Mike Gwin. Dr. Jill Humphries, followed by Cliff Smith.
Thank you. My name is Dr. Jill Humphries, I'm a native Los Angelina, a black California and with the blacks. And who also stands in solidarity with Indigenous and Armenian LGBTQ communities. Humanity, basically. I stand before you as one of our professors and cultural ambassadors representing U.S. higher education, educational exchange programs, where I taught in both Ethiopia and South Africa, just recently returning. As a professor of public administration, where I teach democracy, right? Part of our public policy or foreign policy, supposedly, we are the beacons of democracy. The actions of our city council members and labor union president is beyond the pale. It undermines the work many of us are engaged to create a more accountable and representative local government and also humanity and world, and it's hypocritical. You're the case study that I'll be using to illustrate in the U.S. that we are emerging, emerging democracies still. Right? So when I go back within the next year to African universities and working with local, um, policy people and students, I'm gonna use this as the model case study. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, are you Cliff Smith? Uh, if you hold for just one quick moment, I wanna make sure that I didn't miss Reverend Radim Robinson. No, yes, okay. So, Mr., Reverend Robinson was actually before you. Mr. Smith, you wouldn't mind holding for just a moment? Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Reverend Radim Robinson and I bring you greetings as the Minister of Social Justice from the AME Zion Church where we, we're the church with the blacks. So, very simple, uh, I get tired of politicians talking about Black Lives Matter this and Black Lives Matter this and that, but meanwhile, we have people on this city council who are conspiring to disenfranchise black voters. I've got a problem with that. And so, I am hoping that the, this city council will hold, uh, Sadio, De Leon and Martinez accountable and we are asking for full resignations, not no half-assed resignations. We are asking for a full resignations and in a full investigation. Uh, I do believe that open meeting laws were violated. As a former school board member in Arizona, I know for a fact, uh, open meeting laws were violated. So, I ask that this council will do the right thing and say Black Lives Matter.
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend. Uh, Cliff Smith will be followed by Mike Gwin, followed by Reverend William Smart.
Cliff Smith, I'm the business manager of the Roofers and Waterproofers Union Local Thirty-Six in Los Angeles. We represent hundreds of the hardest working construction workers across the city, many of them Wahakian, many of them immigrant, many of them African-American. As the union representative, we add our voice to all the organizations that are here today to demand the immediate resignation of council members Martinez, Sadio and De Leon. We do not wanna see these people back in this building ever again. Councilmember Martinez, you are a coward and a punk to put in for a leave of absence and not show up today to face your constituents. Do not come back. Take your permanent leave of absence and do not show your face anymore in this building. Roofers Local Thirty-Six, we've taken care of our business at the L.A. County Labor Federation. This body needs to take care of its business and make sure that these three people are excommunicado in this building.
Thank you. Mike Gwin, followed by the Reverend William Smart, followed by Dewey.
Good afternoon, honorable, uh, councilmembers. The corum being set, my name is Mike Gwin. I'm a board member of the National Association of Black Social Workers, local member several organizations, but I'm also a board member of Park Mason Neighborhood Council. And so, um, what's already been said and understood, I'm not gonna repeat that. The reality is, what do we do after this? And not just relegated to our three, those three individuals who are Hispanic, I'm talking about the whole council. And the reason I say that, I worked for L.A. County for twenty-five years, the black and brown individuals did the same thing. You know, we, we all trade barbs at each other's, not just brown, it's black too, but the reality is that they got caught slipping. So, let's, by, by extension, let's make sure we clean house. Uh, beyond the resignations, we, we need to make sure that there's other protocols in place to make sure it doesn't happen again. Now, you, you, you respect the position, but sometimes that person is, is very hard to respect in doing their job. Outside of that, what we do outside of our homes also reflects on us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Reverend William Smart, followed by Dewey, followed by Andres M.
My name is Pastor Smart and as many of you know, I represent the Southern Christian Leadership Conference of Southern California that was founded by Dr. Martin Luther King. And so, there is a decorum I have to bring to every meeting as I represent him. Right now, our community is bleeding, but I wanna thank, I'm gonna take a different angle, I wanna thank those three council persons and the Labor Federation, because they have caused unity in this community like I have never seen before. Blacks, African-Americans, Latinos, Asian Pacific Islanders are coming together. And so, the warning is to you, you don't, we just heard what was on the tape, but there was an attitude that caused this. They had a mindset of taking over and being in charge and so I warn you, if you don't handle your business, the community is gonna handle the business.
Thank you. Thank you. We have Dewey, followed by Andres M., followed by Sunflower A.
I'm Dewey, I'm also with the blacks. Shame on all of you. Resign and make room in those seats for the people who are a reflection of this community. Not money-hungry, power-chasing, paper-chasing, evil racists who are even racist towards their very own, but the real black and brown people who make up the majority of the population in the city of Los Angeles, California. Apologies are not enough. You must resign. There is no other option, there is no excuse. You have not only been exposed as to what we have always assumed you to be, racist, the world got to see who you really are. Many were complicit as well who are up here today. Aren't you embarrassed? This is embarrassing. You take money from your own, you watch your own live on the streets and you kill your own. You lean so closely to white supremacy, I'm happy to tell you, you are white supremacists. White supremacy comes in many shades, you are the spectrum. Nuri, Kevin, Gil, Mitch, baby Eric Garcetti and many others should be embarrassed for the shame that you put on your ancestors. Resign, you are not fit for this work. Blew, no matter who.
Thank, thank you. Thank, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Speaker. Sunflower A., followed by Mike S. Sunflower A., followed by Mike S.
Hi, I'd just like to come here to tell you all that I would never want someone like a racist tia or tio, cuz we all know, we have these family members who have these conversations at their dinner tables and their, and their grocery stores. And I would never want them to sit in that body where you sit there right there, Metro Farrell. This is atrocious. We should not have people who are racist, anti-Indigenous, anti-black, colorist, classist. Everything in the book was in that tape and those seats should remain empty forever. Sadio, Leon, Nuri will never set foot in this body and you guys need to move a motion to remove them if they don't resign. Period, today!
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sunflower. Um, sorry, I have epilepsy, so it might take me a minute. Um, first, I just wanna say, it was a miracle that I made it into this city hall. A miracle. There are hundreds of people outside banging on the fucking door and seeing Mitch. Oh, let's talk about Echo Park Mitch and how you hate unhoused people and how nobody got housing because my mom works in homeless services and unfortunately, she met Nan, uh, Nuri? Nuri. She met Nuri and she told me, “This is Nuri. This wasn't a slip-up, this is her.” Okay, and that's the only conversation we've heard. How many of you sitting on this council right now have had those closed-door talks, fucking racist, bigoted? You are a disgrace. None of you represent the people of Los Angeles. You never have. It's clear. Twenty-twenty, we were begging for the police to be defunded into the community. Fuck the police and fuck this city council. You're a disgrace.
And I believe we already heard from Mike S. Mike S. we already heard from. I have no other speakers in the queue. Did, Richie, did you fill out a, did you fill out a comment card? Yeah, you have one minute, one minute to.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mitch. Uh, I put my name in as Richie earlier in the meeting and you haven't called on me yet, so I, I, two seconds ago, I just put Mike S. in, uh, so thank you for finally calling on me. Um, I wanna say that the things that we heard on the tapes, this is just city hall culture. I mean, you all exhibit anti-black behavior. Paul Coretts, he, he just, he just put out an attack ad attacking a twenty-year-old black kid named Simbalol, a youth activist for the Kenneth Mahia campaign. And Paul, you attacked him and said he was a dangerous black male. So that anti-black behavior, it, it, uh... I under, yeah, it, all, all white, all white people are racist and this, this... Yeah, racism exists in, in this world and you all perpetuate it. Rich, Mitch, you might be the worst one.
Alright, so that completes our public comment. I wanna thank everyone for coming in today and offering the remarks. Did you fill out a card as well? Please, please give us your name.
We, we can't hear you, sir.
Okay, so we never called you up your name again?
Iteneer.
Nick, go right ahead, you have...
Alright, the comments that came to light this weekend are disgusting, but they also point to an ecosystem of racism and disrespect in the backside of it. It is only more infuriating that Kevin De Leon and Gil Sadio decided to come in today and sit before us, the people, without their resignations in hand. Members of this council have called for the resignation of all the involved individuals. I further call on you to pressure them by refusing to conduct city business until Nuri Martinez, Kevin De Leon and Gil Sadio resign from their positions representing the people of this city. Nor are they the only council members guilty of anti-black behavior and those three resignations will not be sufficient to restore the confidence of Angelinos.
Thank you, Speaker. Thank you. Alright, let's, uh, let's proceed with the meeting. And if everyone could please take a seat so we can proceed with the, with the meeting today.
Let's get through our day, not tomorrow.
Alright, so we shall continue. Uh, colleagues, we just heard everyone in public comment express, uh, the outrage and anger and hurt. Uh, this council must grapple with devastating transgressions by three of our colleagues that were brought to light and the deep wounds and suffering their actions have caused to the people of Los Angeles and to members of this body. These transgressions must be confronted and dealt with. I, for one, am hurt, angry and sad. I join all of you in those emotions. As we continue to process this, let's take stock of this city and we, as an elected body, have faced in recent years, not just a global pandemic or a movement for social justice and equity or the crises of homelessness and housing, but a series of scandals that have rocked this chamber. These past episodes have already deepened, damaged the public trust and have already jeopardized our ability to do our duty on behalf of those we serve. And now this, a moment like, unlike any other. What we do now and in the immediate days and weeks to come will be pivotal. And colleagues, we can, we will and we must meet this moment. The casual racism, the abhorrent language, the dehumanizing racist reference describing a child, a black child and the son of a colleague, the denigration of Indigenous peoples, which we just celebrated last night at Grand Park Indigenous Peoples' Day and the Wahakian community was there and, and strong and in force. The familiar tropes against LGBTQ plus individuals, insulting words describing an Armenian-American. The clear abuse of power, carving up the city for pure political gain. The notion that giving renters a greater voice in their government is somehow wrong. Profoundly unbecoming and profoundly unacceptable. Colleagues, at this critical and devastating moment, I'm here to affirm, there is no place for this, there are no excuses, not in this chamber, not as a member of this body, not in this building, not in this city, not in the year 2022, not ever. Councilmember Bonin, you and I are the only LGBTQ members of, of this council. I was at you and Sean's wedding. You have a beautiful son and a beautiful family. And in many communities, including the one we both belong to, we build our families. That is a big part of our culture. Your family is an inspiration to all of us, all people, including me and my partner George. My heart, our hearts are with you, Sean, and your family at this time. You deserved better, we deserve better, the people of Los Angeles deserve better.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I do not believe, I do not believe we can have the healing that is necessary or govern as we need to while councilmembers Martinez, De Leon and Sadio remain as members of this council. I say those words with a heavy heart, but this is a heavy and a deeply tragic moment for this city. The court of public opinion has rendered a verdict and the verdict is, they all must resign.
Yeah!
They need to consider what is best for the city and the people of Los Angeles. That is the only consideration. They must ask, ask themselves, what will be their role to help us heal? And, and can that healing happen if they remain around this horseshoe? And I believe it cannot. In the coming days, there is an enormous amount of business to attend to. I preside before you today as acting city council president, but I stayed unequivocally. I have no interest in seeking the council president, so myself. I had no ambition to be a president pro tem, but I answered the call to serve as I have always done. My only motivation then and now is to be a public servant and, as I sit before you now, presiding in this capacity, in my role, it is to help us get through this moment and help set us on a path to stability and to healing. To that end, today, I introduced a motion that calls for the election of a new permanent council president next Tuesday, October the eighteenth. The work of my life is public service and my job now is to help us heal and move forward. But while I do serve in this temporary capacity, I also believe that part of my job at this juncture is to ensure we reform the way we do business on this council. The comments at the center of this storm came from a discussion on redistricting. They stemmed from business that was before this council at the time these recordings were made, a year ago, and if we are to regain the trust and faith of Angelinos, we need to make some big changes. Today, I introduced a motion that calls for major reform of the city charter, the city council and how we approach redistricting representation, the topics at the center of this crises. The size of this city council has been fifteen members since nineteen twenty-five, when the... The size of this city council has been 15 members since 1925, when the city of Los Angeles had just under 1 million people. Today, we are a diverse metropolis of 4 million, and this council should reflect and represent the residents we serve. A ballot measure that increases the number of council seats will help us meet that goal and involve Angelinos in the process, as will an immediate redistricting process, should the people decide they want an expanded city council. Tomorrow, before this council, we will consider another proposed ballot measure, one that calls for an independent redistricting commission for the normal process we undertake every 10 years to determine council boundaries. This will be another opportunity for us to ensure that we restore a sense of transparency, trust, and faith that Angelinos deserve to have in their government. This is indeed a moment of crises, but it is also an opportunity to demand and receive accountability and to make some structural changes that make our city government better. But in order to be better, we need to do better, and that starts right now, right here. Los Angeles is a special and unique place. We love this city. It is beautiful because of its diversity. It is beautiful because of the diversity of people and cultures that live here and who come here to build a better life. It is beautiful because it is a city of dreamers and doers, of creatives and creators, and it is a place that people are drawn to because they can hope, and they can imagine, and they can believe in stories and ideas and ideals that are bigger than themselves. This moment is bigger than all of us, and we are the legislative body that sets the direction for this city. It is the privilege of a lifetime and a responsibility that defines us, never more so than in this very moment. This is the city of angels, and this moment requires us to appeal to the better angels of our nature that reside within all of us. We must confront the violations of trust, integrity, professionalism, and confidence that are before us, and we must demand better, we must demand action, and we must deliver change. And if we do those things, I am confident we can move forward into a brighter future for the city we love and for the people we serve. And I thank you for that. And I, I'm going to call upon Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. I just want to address the members of the public. For the obvious betrayal that was exposed, it wounded everyone. No one was spared in the despicable remarks and acts that were conducted by three colleagues on this council and the head of the County Federation of Labor. For me, as the daughter of Mexican immigrants, as someone who represents a community that has been betrayed and is... This is not reflective of who our community is, of the hard-working people who have sacrificed, who have struggled to make it in this country, to afford us the very privileges that we are all afforded today. And so with that, colleagues, just felt it was very important to be perfectly clear, because I've said it many times, there is no excuse, there is no room for the behavior that was exhibited, and I demand that my colleagues resign from this council so that we can continue to build the trust for the people and begin the healing that we need here in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Seeing as there are no other speakers on the queue, thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. Madam Clerk, what do we have before us?
Approval of the minutes of October 7, 2022.
All right, Councilmember Rodriguez moves. Councilmember Rahman seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Bonin moves. Councilmember Bluenfield seconds, next.
The council may now vote on items 11 through 13, 17, 19, 20, 22, and 20, 22 through 26.
Those items shall now be voted on. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote?
10 ayes.
Thank you. Next, open the roll. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. The council may now vote on item 18.
Thank you. We may vote on item 18. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, two noes.
Thank you. Let's move to the closed session items, and I would like to refer to Mr. Krikorian, our Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Mr. President. Items 27 through 33 are matters that were considered by the Budget and Finance Committee, which recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. These are routine matters that can be considered in open session unless members have questions or concerns. Item 34 was not considered by Budget and Finance, it was referred to Housing, which, it's my understanding that the Chair of the Housing Committee waived that matter, and that matter can also be taken up in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Madam Clerk, would you please read the settlement announcements, or amounts, rather?
Thank you. For item 27, in the case entitled "Halloweeno Marokin Guzman et al. versus Elise Zola Marshall et al.", there is a recommendation to expend up to $125,000 in settlement. In the case entitled "Josue R. Gastelum Campista et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al.", there is a recommendation to expend up to $650,000 in settlement. In the ca, for item 29, in the case entitled "Armando Sandoval versus City of Los Angeles et al.", there is a recommendation to expend up to $155,000 in settlement. For item 30, in the case entitled "Joanna Aguilar et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al.", there is a recommendation to expend up to $225,000 in settlement. For item 31, in the case entitled "Lillian Woodfin Parker versus City of Los Angeles", there is a recommendation to expend up to $575,000 in settlement. For item 32, in the case entitled "Fafi Y. Meron versus City of Los Angeles", there is a recommendation to expend up to $200,000 in settlement. For item 33, in the case entitled "Paul O. et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al.", there is a recommendation to expend up to $250,000 in settlement. I defer to the city attorney for item 34.
Thank you. For item 34 involving Superior Court cases, 1516 Hobart LLC versus City and Paloma Partnership v. City, the city attorney recommendation is to request the city attorney's office to prepare and present an ordinance to amend Municipal Code Section 151.03 to alter the qualifications for rent adjustment commissioners serving on the Housing Appeals Board for the Los Angeles Housing Department to meet the criteria set forth in the California Building Code.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Madam Clerk, I believe we are now prepared to vote on the settlement items 27 through 34. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, what is next on the agenda?
The council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred, and what do we have now?
The desk is clear.
Colleagues, do we have any announcements today? Announcements? Please, all in the chamber, rise for adjourning motions. And do we have any adjourning motions today? Any adjourning motions on either side of the horseshoe? Seeing as there are none, let's get through this moment, let's move past this, let's transcend this difficulty. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and God bless.